Tonight, we had our Potterville Town Hall meeting and I forgot to hit record right away at the start of the meeting. So what you're going to see is a video that picks up with groups reporting back celebrating how they have seen God at work. And we started the meeting by running through our agenda. We then broke into groups to discuss how we've seen God at work and then we reported back to the group, which is the part that you're going to see picking up here.
I was talking to people here in the fellowship hall, Karen. You have, you have like 30 seconds. People are still coming back from the breakout rooms.
We lost Sam.
He was in briefly and then he disappeared, didn't he? Sam McDaniel was on briefly. Sam McDaniel joined us briefly and then. Yep. Here comes everyone else from the other group. Welcome back, everyone. Welcome back. We're, we're going to wrap up our discussions. I'm letting people know here in person that we're wrapping up. And this is an opportunity, you've, you've talked in your groups, kind of prime the pump for ideas you might have. What are, what are ways that you've seen God at work or things that you're celebrating? Where God has done things. You can let me know online if you want to share. And again, everyone can hear here in person. Let me know in person. If you want to have a microphone and you can say it so that people can hear as well online, or I can repeat it back so that they can hear it too. But where have you seen God at work?
Mark, we've talked in our group about seeing God change in the change of the seasons and the warmer weather and, and also in being able to meet in person and how meaningful that is.
Yes.
To be able to see people and be able to sing together. And just, and just things going on in our lives. I shared about my online, my, my online study I'm doing and how that engagement has really been great.
That's great. Thank you, Kathy. What other things are you celebrating? Again, either online or in people who are here in person in the fellowship hall? And by the way, meeting in person for worship got an amen, Kathy, from Sharon.
Mark, we also talked in our group about the connection to the church with prayer. And being, you know, like just being able to reach out to our church family, even though we haven't met together and still know they're supporting us. And also seeing different people in the chat when you're online, people maybe you haven't seen or you don't know. And just how, how cool that is, but also how we'll have to adjust to face to face. Cause we know it's coming and, and we want that. We just have to get there.
Yeah. I feel like we need to develop an elaborate note passing system for when we're in person. So we can still pass notes during the service.
And cover in our robes.
Yeah, uncovering your robe. There you go.
That's kind of what we talked about. We talked about Denise and my. Talked about how easy it is on Sunday morning to just wake up and turn it on and here you are. So it's like, we're going to get used to actually getting up and getting ready for church again. And that's going to be a new pattern for some of us. But we also talked about how the bread drop is still an amazing ministry that we continue to do. And we also talked about the candy bag that we pulled together to do the drive through. On third. I had said the same thing about the prayers. It's good to, I've seen prayers answered. And, and I'm paying more attention, not paying more attention to them, not that I did it before, but I'm even more intentional about it. Connected to people and, and so we've talked about how God has just, has flourished. Really, I've seen a lot of. Prayers answered. For the things that people have put in. So yeah, it's been great.
Very good. Thank you, Karen. Yeah. So here, here in person Jill has something to share. So pause a second in line. I want to listen to what Jill says and I'll repeat it back. So you all can hear it online too. Yes. So here in person Jill and Terry and Sandy were celebrating as well, our food ministries and that those have been able to continue. Particularly the food pantry and the, and the bread drop and how helpful those things are to our community, particularly over a difficult season this past year. Definitely. I didn't put myself in a group because I could very easily give you a huge, long list of things. Cause most of us are not super connected right now, but as, as much as someone can be connected right now, I get to connect with a lot of you and hear things that are going on. And a couple of things that I'm definitely celebrating are our youth ministry and that that has continued. We were able to meet this past Sunday at Pastor Tom's house outside. And there were seven middle schoolers who got together and five high schoolers. And we had a blast. I, I had to review gathering expectations with the middle schoolers. Because you could tell it had been a while since we'd been together in person and had to focus. But it was a lot of fun to have all the energy and the, you know, kids being kids. And so it was a lot of fun. Another thing I've been celebrating is that I'm leading, experiencing God's small group right now. And there are 12 people in that group who are doing a lot of work to experience God. And it's been really neat that this, this past week, we opened our group with introductions and every single person was sharing ways that, that they'd experienced God over the previous week. And that's really what that, that class is about. It's becoming aware of how God's always at work around us. And finding ways that we can join God and what God is doing. And so it, I taught that last year as well and had 16 people in the class and then 12 again this year. I'm so excited that there's 28 people by the end of this year, who are going to be trained to look for where God is at work and to join God and doing God's work. So that's a great thing. I would imagine that once I share, usually I have a way of shutting down conversation, but is there anything else that someone else would like to add that they're celebrating? Yeah. Joanne has something here in person. Yes. So Joanna's celebrating that the United Methodist Women have continued to meet. And just over the past week, they put together everything for our Easter candy drive through. So they were able to buy all the candy. They met here at the church safely and they were able to pack and. They're in the office right now here at the church. They're huge bags of candy. They're very generous. I'm, I'm very excited about how much candy will be. Joanne just said that all the candies counted so that I won't sneak any out. But we're very excited about being able to reach kids in our community through that event and to be able to bless them. So thanks to the UMW for doing that. And Sharon, you have something too? Yes. So Sharon's also celebrating our little free library that we put in this winter. The books have been disappearing from that really quickly. It's been a lot of fun. We just had to refill it again yesterday. We did have one period where, where we went and we checked some of the books in there and someone had dropped off a bunch of risque romance novels. And so we, we pulled those out. We weren't sure. I mean, if you want to read those on your time, go for it. Fine with that, but we're not necessarily going to disseminate that literature to the community, to the church little free library.
No.
Most of what is in there now is children's books or young adult books. Well, if there's nothing else, I'm going to move us on to talking a little bit about our COVID survey results. So we released this a couple of weeks ago and we're. Part of the challenge again with, with COVID and the pandemic is we live in little echo chambers on our own and we don't always know. What other people are thinking, where other people are in terms of things. And that's particularly been a challenge for me and Tom as pastors of Sycamore Creek. To try to keep a pulse on our congregation and figure out like where people are. It, it's been very, very challenging. And so this survey was one of our attempts to get some information from people on how they're doing. And again, I'm going to share my screen. People here in person have this as well. So what you'll see on your screen is the results of our survey. And what I, what I plan to do here is I'm just going to brief you, walk you through this. I'm not sure if all of you have seen this or not. If you haven't, I'm going to, you'll kind of just let you know briefly what the results are. And then we'll do the same thing. We'll break into groups and I'll give you an opportunity to sort of reflect on the results. You, you know, if you want, you can say where you are on these different things. It's just again, an opportunity to hear other voices and to kind of hear where other people are in terms of things. So. What you see is our first question is, is when do you expect to be ready for gathering in person and for large group events with social distancing practices? And the vast majority of people would be ready to gather either this summer. Or as you see on here, when 50% or more of people are vaccinated. Again, you, you can look at this in more detail if you want. I'm trying to just kind of summarize so we don't get caught in all this. And then as you look at the timeline for, for when people would be ready to gather in large groups with social distancing. For most people, it's, it's this summer or this fall. Again, the majority of people in our church fall into those categories. And then continuing in the survey, and by the way, you can see on the, on the screen, it says 96 responses. We, between the two campuses, we got 96 responses. You'll see a little later on in the survey, the sort of the breakdown of, of who responded. Across our campuses. We also asked, when do you expect to be ready for gathering in person in large group events without any social distancing practices? And there again, most of the people were looking at some sort of vaccination threshold. A lot of people had, 70% are vaccinated. A lot of people said they didn't know, which I think shows that we're still just a lot of uncertainty about what's happening. And it's reflected there and a lot of people saying, I don't know. You also see that if you have in-person gatherings without social distancing, that the percentage of people who said they're ready to gather right now. Is smaller than people who are ready to gather right now with social distancing practices. And continuing our way down in terms of a timeline, again, you'll see that big purple, I don't know. A lot of people are uncertain. And then a lot of people again are saying either this summer or this fall. For gatherings in person without social distancing practices. Then we asked some questions about the digital ministry that we've been doing. And the first question we asked about digital ministry is how important do you think the digital ministry presence and creativity has been? Once we are meeting again in person for your own spiritual growth. And you'll see a little bit of a spread here across the range from. One was not very important and five was very important. And the vast majority of people are in the very important category from our church. And in general, most people are three or higher across the survey results that we got. Suggesting that for our church and for people in our church, the digital things that we're doing. Are helpful and helpful even once we meet in person. Continuing down to other, here we asked like what specific things are helpful. Specifically, one of the top things that came up is having messages or sermons that are available online. I think we've, we've, we've seen that consistently even pre pandemic. And it's kind of hard to read here, but this is worship services that are available online. It was the other top thing. And you'll see there's some other practices like, like small groups and being able to connect with things. Like signing up for things online that also came up fairly high for people, again, within our church. So this is for your own spiritual growth within our church. Continuing down, we asked also, how important do you think it is for digital ministry online to reach new people? Again, this is once we're meeting again in person. How important do you think it is? And the overwhelming majority of people, I think there's only one person actually who was, didn't think it was helpful at all. Felt like our digital ministry is important for reaching new people. That one's pretty clear cut. So I don't think I need to spend too much time on that. And the same things came up again. And this is in terms of having sermons. Either audio or video available online, and then also having worship services that are available online. Those are the top two, both for our own spiritual growth as a church, but also for reaching new people. And again, you'll see some of the same other things showed up like connecting with small groups and. Various other ways of connecting also came up as a helpful thing for new people. We asked people which campus that they were from and you can see about 30% of the respondents were from Potterville. And about 64% were from Lansing. And then there's a little range here in the church in a pub, other, other people who came up with their own answers. And this is, this is very typical of attendance pre pandemic at the campuses. We're about two thirds Lansing, about one third Potterville. In terms of the overall attendance of our church. Then we asked people too, what generation, because we were just curious how, if there were any generational differences. In terms of how people approached online ministry. And you, here you can see the breakdown of which generations were represented by the survey. And what we found is that is, it didn't really matter what generation you were from. Across the board, the, the results were fairly consistent. A spread not dependent necessarily on, on age. And I believe that's the end of it. So I am going to give you a little bit of time here to reflect on those survey results. To talk about your own response to the survey. And to maybe talk too about what that means, which we'll get into here in a little bit. But I'm going to break you again into breakout rooms online and I'm going to encourage you again here in person to get with your group. And to discuss, what are your reactions to the COVID survey results? Welcome back.
I made it.
What's that Sandy? So we are, we are back. What, what did you talk about in terms of your reactions to the COVID survey results? Or anything that you want to share personally about your comfort or discomfort with COVID and where you are? What were your conversations about? And if, if, let me just clarify, if someone's online, let me know you want to talk and I'll make sure that no one's talking here in person. And if someone is talking here in person, I'll let you know online and then I'll pass it on to all of you. So what'd you talk about in your groups? Sandy is going to talk here in person. So she'll lead us off. I'll listen to her, then I'll relay it to what we, what she says. Okay. So Sandy felt like what, what she saw in the results was about what she would have expected with different people. So what she means by that is there's sort of a mixture of people want to get together and do things, but then there's also some caution mixed along with that. And so seeing that people aren't quite, a lot of people aren't quite ready, either this summer or this fall, or once more people are vaccinated. That was been consistent with Sandy's experience. I, I see Denise has her hand raised on the Zoom call. Way to go. Denise gets bonus point.
Oh, I get points.
You can share next Denise.
Okay. Um, I felt that, it didn't surprise me, the results. And I said, I was one that shared that I think even after we start meeting in person, that we still need to have some kind of online presence. Because I think we have reached out to people in other areas, you know, that have found us. And it's nice to be out there, you know, instead of just one way of in, in person only. So.
Yes. Absolutely. You're getting some agreed in here Denise in the fellowship hall. Thank you. Someone else, what did you talk about in your groups? Yeah, Jamie's got her hand up. Go ahead, Jamie.
We talked about, in our group, we were all different about when we're ready to come back. Um, but we did touch at the end about how the digital piece of it will allow people to go with their own comfort zone. So instead of feeling like discouraged because the church is back to meeting, but you don't feel comfortable, you still are part of it. So we talked about vax, being vaccinated and that kind of thing. And, but we also talked about having a false sense of security. That the vaccine is like the be all and all. And some people then feel like others maybe aren't as cautious as you'd like or as cautious as you are. So the digital piece will really help, I think, with that. But we also talked about Kyle and I are huggers. We can't come back with y'all yet. We just can't.
Can't trust yourself.
Right.
I can understand that. Just so, just to reassure you, Dorian's and the rest of you, I have talked with several medical experts about this. And they do think that if you're both wearing masks and you're not like going in for like a 30 second hug, that it is okay to hug.
Oh, so we can time to 29 and a half.
Just so you know, again, if both people are masks and it's brief, I mean, and clearly like you, your faces would not be facing each other when you did that.
Right.
That is okay.
Okay.
More and more, what we're finding again is transmission is not necessarily through surfaces. It's really through respiratory droplets. And so if you're washing your hands, again, you're not like coughing into your hand and then giving a hug clearly, but um, you know.
And Kyle, don't breathe while you hug somebody.
Thank you, Kyle. Yes. Anything else that you shared in your groups? Yes. Sandy was saying here in person that you could do side hugs. Yeah, Kathy.
I shared in our group that I'm one that said I was ready to come back. I've been ready to come back, but I appreciate and understand that others aren't as comfortable. So I think we just have to be respectful of where everybody is and not think. You know, not think badly about somebody because they don't want to come back and not think badly about somebody because they do want to come back. But just respect where we all are. And it's such a wide spectrum of where we're at. Even in that small group, like Jamie said, the four of us, we're all, we're at different levels of comfort. So it's all okay.
Yes. Yeah, we really didn't have any of those pie charts where one of the sections wasn't represented. Like I, I think that perfectly shows that people have a wide variety of different perspectives on this. It wasn't like people just fell into one category or another category. There's a whole spectrum of perspectives on all of this.
One question though, Mark, and we, that came up, I think Lori brought this thought up is, you know, some of those questions on the survey. Were geared toward whether or not the online presence was attracting new people, you know, if we should keep doing it because it's attracting new people. And we talked about how we, in the chat, we see new names and stuff that we don't know. But I'm wondering, do we have a sense of whether or not the online presence has brought people? And is that something that's being measured in some way? And probably through our connection cards, I imagine, but what do we know about that?
We know less than I would like to know. It's the bottom line. Again, one of the challenges throughout the pandemic has been being connected and knowing how people are doing. And that's true of all of you. That is also true of new people that we're connecting with online. If, if someone does not comment or do something visible during a worship service, we, I don't really know that they're there. I mean, so I, I can on my phone, I can see if people who I'm Facebook friends with show up into an online worship service. But if I'm not Facebook friends with them, I have no idea that they're there on the service unless they comment. And we have a system where if someone comments, we reach out to them and say, thanks for joining us in worship. And direct them to our digital connection card. The other challenge we faced online is you all did a fabulous job of filling out a connection card when we were in person. The Potterville campus was the model for this across, across Sycamore Creek. We routinely had 70% or more of people who are attending our worship service fill out a connection card. And now that it's online, none of y'all are filling out a connection card. I see a whole lot of like, like heads bowed in shame here in the fellowship hall. We just aren't, we, we don't fill out the connection card and we still have next steps that change every week on there. But most people are not doing that. And so we've had a handful of people who have filled out that digital connection card who are new people. And we've probably sent out four or five of our books to first time guests from people here in Potterville. And so we're still getting new people, but a lot of them I don't know about. Just recently Danielle, our children's ministry coordinator was contacted by someone in the Potterville area who said, oh yeah, I've been in online worship throughout the whole pandemic. We're so excited about coming back in person and having our kids be part of your kids creek program. And Danielle and I were both like, I had no idea who they were. Like I had no idea that they had been online. I just had someone email me this past week who. I had no clue that they were watching our worship services online and apparently they've been regularly watching and consider Sycamore Creek their home church. So I wish I could give you better data, but I don't have it.
That must really bother the scientist part of you.
Yes, it does bother me. Well, it's also.
Pilling off the connection card.
Yes. Yep. It, it's also challenging though, just from a leadership perspective, that it is hard for me to have the pulse of our church right now. And that bothers me. I really like it when I know what's going on in your lives, when I know what your perspectives are. And that, that's been hard to have throughout this pandemic. And that's one of the things I'm looking forward to in terms of things opening up is seeing more people. It is so hard right now to connect with other people. It requires so much effort. And I can't wait for things to be more open and for me to be able to connect with more people more easily. Any other thoughts on the survey?
Mark.
Your two computer thing is working against you there Lori. You've got your microphone on and both. They're transmitting out of both, I mean.
Okay. So now can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Feedback.
Yeah. So um, I just had a comment. I, I can feel, I feel like it's going to be a lot of work for you. To try and be like this octopus with all these, you know, things that you're trying to do to keep us all together. But I just wanted to, to say that we had a really good. Outdoor service session, you know, when things started to get bad and we had masks on and stuff when we were outside. I think outside together was good, you know, so if we have to be outside together. I don't know if you can do that online too, which maybe you could do your 9:30. Online and then maybe you can, you know, do your other outside together or something to, to reduce your workload. I just, I just feel like it's a lot, you know, just kind of. Trying to take it in and watch you. It's, it just feels like it's a lot. So we're all ready to do a little less. Instead of a little more, if you need to, I think.
Yes. We're all excited that the kids are on here. Hello, Isaac.
They've been outside playing the whole time. That's why it's been nice and quiet. And heard voices.
Yeah. Thank you for sharing that Lori. Uh, that, you know, we're going to be talking about worship creativity and mission here in a minute. And, and that is one of the things to figure out is there's only one of me and there are only so many hours in the day and how. and there are only so many hours in the day. And how do we, how do we balance in person and in meeting that need? And online, particularly during this transition period where people are adjusting and we're all over the place in terms of our perspectives, as we've acknowledged. Um, so we will get to that and I would appreciate input. I definitely think that meeting online is one of the, or outside is one of the things that I would consider. Of course, that's very weather dependent. Um, but uh, we had fantastic worship services outside last summer and fall, and that's a great idea. I also see that Cody has her hand up and so Cody, don't, don't uh, share and drive, but let us.
I am parked now. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I was just curious if um, there's been any conversation about at some point having online be another um, campus, so to speak of ours, so that it would take the burden off of you and maybe have a person who's just responsible for online service.
That's a great suggestion. Thank you, Cody. Um, so there are, we're gonna, we're gonna get into this in our, in the near future here in the meeting. But there are a lot of different options that are available to us. Um, we are a multi-site church. And one option is South Lansing, which is our main campus. It's the biggest campus, would be the primary online presence. And Potterville could one of the options would be that in the future, we would just focus on in person. That that's, that's definitely an option. Uh, you know, if we were to do an online campus as a church, I don't, we're not at a place right now where Lansing could have an online campus and Potterville could have an online campus. A true online campus really needs someone who is online regularly and is sort of uh, creating spiritual content and helping disciple people uh, in that online format. And the the challenge that that Tom and I have right now is as we move toward in person, we're we're sort of discipling online and in person. And that gets to be a big job, particularly as the footprint of each we hope will grow and we get, you know, more people in person and more people online. Um, so there are a lot of options there. Um, what what we're doing right now is we basically, our online presence is primarily uh, worship content that's that's produced and there's worship services online from each campus. We don't necessarily have to have our worship service, uh, you know, specifically produced for online from each campus. And just as an example, one option in the future could be to just have a camera somewhere in our sanctuary. And we broadcast whatever's happening at the front of the church um, online. And there's, there's really no attempt to make it an online worship service. It's just, here's our in person and you can watch it along with us if you want. And that that is an option as well. Um, I see Kathy also has her hand up. Go ahead, Kathy. Oh, you're muted, Kathy.
I know there was one slide, uh, the breakdown between the campuses and who answered the survey.
Yes.
But do we have a sense or do we measure um, the individual questions by campus? Or those are all just um, combined?
We, so we did, this isn't a very sophisticated survey. Um, we didn't, we didn't do tons of breakdown by campus. Um, again, if you, if you saw that we roughly had 25, 30 responses total from the Potterville campus. Um, just based on our glancing at the data, there wasn't a huge difference between the two campuses in the answers that we saw. There was, like you again, like you experienced in your group, there was a range of perspectives and that's true in Lansing and that's also true here in Potterville.
Okay. Just curious about that.
Uh, I'm gonna, in the interest of time, I can move aside. We're kind of getting into worship options here, which is great because, because that's coming up on our agenda. Um, just, just to again, I'm going to share my screen so you all can see our agenda. Um, we have talked about ministry celebration and we've talked about our COVID survey results, our near future plans for meeting. Um, so earlier this month, we started in-person worship watch parties. Um, I've gotten some questions about what does that mean? And it is basically, we gather together in the fellowship hall and we watch the worship service together. And the value there is on us gathering together and being together to worship. Um, and that that, that is uh, you know, high value, I think, for people who are gathering um, in that space. Uh, we consistently right now online have way more people who are engaged online than we do in person um, for that worship watch party. Um, there are a whole myriad of reasons for why that could be. Um, it it could be people's comfort level. It could be how compelling what we're doing in person is, you know, there's, there's a whole range. And again, this is where I, I have no idea what everyone is thinking, so I just make stuff up in my head um, half the time. But but pretty consistently, we're around 30-ish screens that are engaging our Facebook service uh, at 9:30. And then we have about four to five people who are on YouTube, who are watching our YouTube. Um, and so somewhere 30-ish to 40-ish uh, computer screens are engaged each Sunday with what we're doing online. Um, here in person, we've done it three weeks now with our in-person watch party. And we've had 19, 16, and then 17 people um, the three weeks that we've done it in person. Um, I think our fellowship hall at about 50% capacity could very comfortably seat 50-ish people um, with distancing and with masks and all that. So we are nowhere near capacity right now um, in terms of our gatherings in person inside. What we're going to continue to do, at least through Easter, um, is continue to have our 9:30 online service and then our 11 AM worship watch party. Uh, we're going to start adding some things in in our in-person worship. And so starting this week, we're going to have um, coffee time outside in the parking lot after worship. And so we'll have some coffee and um, allow people to to gather and to catch up with one another in the parking lot afterward. Uh, we will also for Easter at the sunrise service, we will have um, coffee and some goodies. I'm not sure what that will be yet, what the goodies are, but that will be at the sunrise service. Um, and then we'll also have coffee at the uh, 11 AM in-person watch party on Easter. And that's, that's sort of a movement toward uh, more interaction and in more sort of quote unquote, normal things happening. Um, right now, in terms of in-person worship, we're continuing to meet in the fellowship hall because it's, it's just an easier space in terms of um, using the space. Uh, you know, if we had 16, 17 people like we've had and we were in the sanctuary, that is a huge space with lots of pews for only 16 or 17 people. And um, it it just, everything is more difficult with the pews. There, there cloth surfaces, there's carpet everywhere. The ventilation in the sanctuary is very poor. Um, it's just a harder space to keep clean and to clean. And so for right now, the the plan is that if we continue to meet inside, it will continue to be in the fellowship hall. As we, hopefully we'll get more and more people who attend in person, we will move to more and more elements of the worship service in person being live elements. So for example, we might have um, a live musician like Kevin or Tyler leading worship um, music in person. We might have hosts who are in person and greeting us rather than videos of our host families. Um, and so that that is the plan in the near term to to move toward meeting. Um, I definitely will, as the weather gets better, take into account a meeting outside and whether that would be an option as well. Um, and right now, the the plan is basically that our 9:30 service will continue to be an online service. And then whatever we do in person, whether it's inside or outside, uh, would be at 11 AM. Uh, just a quick, I'm gonna quick pause a second there. Are there any questions on that? What I just said before we get into our next agenda item? Sharon has a question here in person. Correct. So Sharon's asking if we had an outside service, when it would be? And yes, the outside service would be at 11. And the online would be at 9:30. Well, good either. It's a super clear or it's so unclear, no one has a question. So that's fantastic. Uh, I want to move us on then to our next section here and I'm going to share again on the agenda on the screen. Uh, I've, I've shared with you a little bit about our near future plans for meeting and I'd like to talk a little bit about how to balance all of this. Um, and so that's, that's the question of how do we balance online and in person? How do we envision worship moving forward? Um, I would, I would love to hear from all of you on that. And in order to do this, I'm going to again, break you into groups to sort of discuss some of your ideas as a group and then I'll have you come back and report back to me. Um, I think what I'd like to hear is is some creative ideas around like uh, gathering in person, online. Uh, one of the things that you're probably not aware of, but putting together an online worship service is a ton of work. Um, I probably spend oh, I would say six to eight hours a week at video editing. Um, uh, each sermon takes probably two hours to record. And then we have a professional video editor who is editing the sermons. And it takes him two to three hours a week to edit the sermon. So there's, there's a significant amount of time. Uh, Kevin, in order to produce music, uh, if it's just him, it takes him about two to three hours to record the music. Um, and then I do the editing on that. Um, when we do a whole band piece, it takes Kevin about 20 hours to coordinate with the band and to put it together. And it takes me about 10 hours of video editing to put together one song. Um, so just, just so you're aware of the, like, the time that goes, I think most people have no idea until you get into it, uh, how much time it takes. And so the online worship does, it takes a significant amount of time. And that's, that's one of the challenges is how do I balance that with in person? So I'm going to give you a couple of minutes to discuss as a group, how do we balance online and in person? How do you envision worship moving forward? Discuss as a group and then we'll come back and share our ideas as a whole group. And I'm going to put you online into groups right now. So welcome back, everyone. We're wrapping up our conversations here. What uh, what sort of things did you share in your groups about our questions? How do we balance online and in person? And how do you envision worship moving forward? What'd you talk about in your groups? Again, uh, if you're in person, let me know and I'll let the online folks. So Sandy has something here in person she's going to tell me and then we'll get to some people online as well. So Sandy is encouraging me that once we're back in the sanctuary, the idea of a, of camera of some sort setup and recording the front of the sanctuary uh, would be a great option to broadcast what's happening in Potterville. And she's continuing, so I'll continue to listen and let you know online. Go ahead, Sandy. Yes, and Sandy's making the point that once it's recorded, then it can be available online and people could watch that online. Okay, they're also bringing up here in person that the pastor in a parking lot that I did last summer and fall uh, was a good idea. And they're continuing, so more things I'll let you know online that Sandy's saying. Yeah. So Sandy also made this suggestion, and this is, you know, I asked for creative and so she reminded me this is creative, that there are opportunities to tap into other talents and particularly musical talents that might be present in our community um, and to have them be a part of our worship service. Um, and she cited some examples of people who have been involved with different creative things that the South Lansing campus has done. Is there anyone online who uh, wants to share things they talked about in their group? People are, people are chuckling here in person because no one wants to share apparently. Okay, go ahead, Jamie.
Okay, sorry.
No problem.
You thought I was raising my hand. I was just trying not to hit Kyle. Sorry. No. Um, we talked in our group about, um, well, we were number one thankful that you shared how long it takes to put together what's been going because most of us don't have any idea. So that's huge. But we also talked about churches who are just, when I say just, I don't mean it's nothing, but just broadcasting the front of their church. Then they don't have any control over if something happens and the broadcast goes out or, you know, the pastor doesn't know um, necessarily. So I don't know anything about technology, but I only know that Zach has experienced that a few times and they seem to have it under control. But for Zach, it's an after, after the fact thing. So um, there's just that to think about and that would be a big change from the really well-constructed messages and services that are put together and, you know, laid out and easy to follow and um, and that you can watch at any time. So um, but we talked about like, we did like the outside, but in our group, we thought we weren't overly creative to figure out how to balance it or what to do, but we were glad to talk about it.
We were all counting on Sandy.
We were.
Very good. Go ahead, Lori.
I was just, um, I was just saying like, if we kind of look at um, in reverse of what we did, you know, when the pandemic came on and we were trying things. Um, if we just kind of, you know how you're saying add the human elements to the service as we go, you know, the more people come on, the more people come in person, the more we can add, you know, maybe a bit of music or and and anything that we do when we add that back in is hopefully going to take away a little bit of work, you know, editing and stuff like that. But I was thinking, you know, maybe could you alternate, you know, like what before we said, okay, every other week we're going to do outside. I mean, does, does that help if every other week you don't have to do, you know, as much work? I think um, I think knowing what I know is about producing something and teaching it online is that it takes like three to four times. And it sounds like even more than that, takes three to four times the time to do it. But um, you're the only one that knows how to tweak it, you know, like uh, like is the bang for the buck, the 9:30 service being recorded? I mean, that's the majority of the work, I'm guessing. Is that still, is that still the best part? Is that the element that you want to keep or is that the part that's too much work? You, you know, maybe you'd need an alternating form or or does it make it too hard for people that aren't ready to meet yet to have it every other week? I don't know. I was just thinking if you could break it up, maybe it'd be better not do, not have to do it every week the same.
Those are great suggestions. Thank you, Lori. Uh, part of what I'm doing right now is I'm looking at like where people are and I put more time where more people are. Um, that that kind of goes back to experiencing God that I talked about earlier. So if I'm seeing 30 to 40 u- units, I don't know how many people it is, but computer units that are online and I see in the teens in person, um, I'm putting more time right now into online worship than I am in-person worship because that's where more people are and are engaged in our worship services. My hope would be that over time that would change. Um, and one of the other things that we've done with our online worship service, which, you know, I think Jamie noted correctly is we've tried to tailor our worship service online to be for an online experience. Um, so it's not just a camera set up in a room um, where there's, you know, in our typical worship service on a Sunday morning, there's going to be times where there's dead air. Where like, you know, someone is walking from one part of the room to another. Um, you know, there's transitions that inevitably happen in a worship service and we've completely gotten rid of those online. Like there's not much like dead air, so to speak, where you're just kind of like, oh, that was awkward. Um, things just move from one thing to the next. Things just move from one thing to the next. And so the challenge, I think, is in, in online versus in-person is how much do you craft an experience that's, that's strictly for people who are in a room and it's in-person versus how much do you craft an experience that's for someone who's online? And how do we balance those two things? It's, it's not easy. I haven't mentioned either that I have started taking classes again this year. And for the last class I took, I had three five-page papers and a 10-page paper. For the next class I'm taking, over the next two weeks, I'll read two 200-page books and write two five-page papers on them. And so the United Methodist Church and the education I'm receiving is also taking up some of my time as well. Other things that you would like to add that you talked about in groups?
Would there be an opportunity for anyone to help learn what you've done to help you for the online presence? Because in our group, we talked about, I said, boy, I really do, I don't know how I could help with that. Like, I have no idea, right? So, and so I don't think I'm qualified to help with, you know? So that's the, that's the thing, is that if we're unable to help give you rest or give you breaks from having to do everything, yeah, we're gonna have to find an alternate, at least part of the time, because, like you say, you're one person and you have family and you have people. And, and so I don't know if there's anything that, you know, anybody that is in our community, in our church community, that would be able to help any, help you in any of that anyway. And that's where I'm kind of stuck, I can't change. But how can we lead some of that stress, some of those paths?
Well, you know, I think if any of you know someone who likes to video edit or record videos, feel free to let me know. That's definitely, one of the challenges and one of the differences between our two campuses is Lansing has several people who are professional video editors, so they do that as their career. And they have some support in that. They also have two people who work with computers for their job. And so they have some very technically savvy folks over in South Lansing. We do not have a ton of people who are familiar with video editing here in Potterville. And so I would love to build that up and to have other people help with things like that. Now, there are a lot of things that someone can do, even if you just, like, for example, you have an iPhone and you have iMovie on your phone. You can do very basic movie editing that, that's relatively simple. There's also free software that you can download, and my son Drew has helped me occasionally with, with recording, like, videos of the teenagers and then editing them. And that's something that's simple enough that, you know, like I said, a teenager could pick up. So there, there are options there to get more people involved, and I, I would love to get more people involved. So that's a great suggestion. I'm gonna, in the interest of time, keep us moving and wrap us up on this. I really appreciate all your input. It's helpful for me that you're aware of what's going on and sort of how we're thinking about things. And if you have further input on it, you are free to contact me. And, you know, I love to talk about this stuff. I love to hear your thoughts. It's really helpful for me to not navigate this on my own. So thank you for your, your listening and for your sharing tonight. As I wrap us up, I'm gonna, again, share on the screen here our agenda. We are in the homestretch. So our upcoming church calendar, we are still in our small group spring semester that'll continue through April. Throughout March, we've had an online letter from Birmingham Jail each Saturday night. There'll be the final, the fourth episode of that coming up this Saturday night. It's been fantastic. It's all available online through South Lansing's Facebook page. And once it's released, there, you can just watch it like a video. And I would highly encourage you, if, if you watch nothing else, like, there's discussion before and after, but watch the Birmingham Jail production itself, because it's really well-done. If you're interested, there's a Lenten retreat coming up. It's tomorrow, actually. It was Pastor Tom. I don't know whether you can still sign up for that, but it's, Tom told me to put it on the schedule, so there it is. He also is gonna lead a hike coming up on the 29th at 7:00 PM, where if you're interested, you can meet at Birchfield Park. And given the status of Tom's feet, it probably won't be a super-long hike. But if you'd like to see some other people outside and be out, enjoy the nature, you're welcome to be a part of that. Of course, we have all kinds of things coming up for Easter. I'm not gonna go over all of those right now, because there's a lot between Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. In April, I'm really excited. We're gonna do a four-week series on hymns. And so each week, we'll feature a different hymn in worship, and the sermon will be based off of that hymn. Also, in May, we'll, we'll have sign-ups again for our summer small groups. Related to that hymn series, we're looking at doing an outdoor praise kind of hymn singing thing, either May 31st is Memorial Day, or May 30, which is the Sunday before Memorial, Memorial Day. Summer camps, you'll see, is on there. United Methodist Summer Camps are open and meeting this summer. And so if you know someone who's interested in camp, Cody Doby has agreed to be our contact person for that, and so you can let Cody know if you have someone who's interested in camp. We do have money available, too. We've had, we have so many generous people in our church. We have lots of money to continue to be able to help kids, even though we haven't had a cake auction lately. You'll see annual conference for the United Methodist Church here in Michigan is June 1 through 6. And then our baptism service will be at the end of June, on June 27. And finally, we were supposed to have general conference coming up this summer, and it's been postponed again to 2022. The significance of that, again, is our church sort of getting clarity around human sexuality and probably splitting in some form. And that will not happen now till 2022 at the earliest. So we are to check out sort of evaluation point. And you can, if you're online, you can type this in a, in the comments, or you can raise your hand and let me know. But on a scale of one to 10, where one is, this is the worst meeting you've ever been a part of, and 10, this is the best meeting you've ever been a part of, how would you rate this meeting? And if you rate it a one, then you gotta give me a way to let me know what's, what's, how you could improve it in some point. So you can share that either by typing in the comments or by raising your hand and letting me know. You can shout it out if you're here in-person. Sharon gives it a 10 here in-person. Sandy gave it a 10 here in-person. Cody has her hand up. Cody, would you like to share?
I just wanted to shamelessly plug my small group that I'm trying to get people to join. If anyone is interested in doing a virtual walk with me and a few others from England to Jerusalem, we've got eight million miles to walk, and I could use some extra feet.
Whoa, okay. Contact Cody, Cody, if you're interested in that.
I'd be logging all those hiking miles in there. We'd be in Jerusalem next week.
I sure wish he would start logging. He's in the group. He hasn't logged any steps.
I, I should log, because I walk a lot.
We'd appreciate your help.
So I'm seeing online a lot of comments, a 10 from Karen, a nine from Lori. Well-organized and timely, says Karen. Kristen gave it an eight. Her internet connection was unstable. I'm sorry, I can't, I can control a lot of things, Kristen, but that's out of my control. Denise said this was very informative and worth her time. Lori said this is informative. Kristen, like, seen everyone and talking about where we are and where we're going. Thank you, everyone, for being a part of it. I really appreciate your time. When Sharon got here tonight, she was like, oh, this is gonna be an hour and a half. But it, it goes pretty quickly when we're talking and we're getting to spend time with each other. So thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Lori also said the breakouts were nice. One of the things that I enjoyed about this is we've also done town halls where we meet with Lansing. And sometimes it's hard, I think, when we're meeting as a whole church, to hear from other Potterville people and to hear as much from me. Generally, if, if it's, you know, two-thirds, one-third, South Lansing, Potterville, that's also how much you hear from Tom in a meeting versus how much you hear from me. And I appreciate this, where I get to connect and hear from all of you. So thank you for being here tonight. I am gonna close us with prayer, and we will wrap up. So let's pray. God, I thank you for our gathering tonight to talk about our church and where we're headed. We thank you, God, that even in the midst of a pandemic, our church is unstoppable. I thank you for our mission. I thank you for the people who are a part of this mission. I thank you, God, that whether we're reaching people in-person or online, that we're reaching people and that we're being reached ourselves, and that we're being transformed into your likeness. Help us to continue to do that. Help us to call that out of each other, that we will continue to grow in the character of Christ. It's in the name of Christ that we pray. Amen. Well, thank you, everyone. I did pretty good. It's 8:32, and we're wrapped up. You are free to go for the night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.